Good morning, everyone. This, the Wednesday, July 5th, 2023, regular meeting of the NAGS Headboard of Commissioners is hereby called to order. Hope everyone had a great Fourth of July. If you will, please join us in a few moments of silence. Now, if you'll stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
Say move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Thank you. That brings us to recognitions, and we'll begin with the Fire Department this morning. Morning, Chief.
Good morning. Distinguished Board, I present to you Tyree Hughes, who has been serving the town of Nagshead since June 25th, 2018. Tyree's commitment to self-improvement, his dedication to our community, has been truly commendable. Throughout his time with us, Tyree has pursued various certifications, including North Carolina Emergency Medical Technician, North Carolina Fire Officer One, and North Carolina Fire Pump Operator. These achievements reflect his relentless effort to enhance his skills and become an exceptional firefighter. Tyree's passion for his work and his appreciation for teamwork made a positive impact on our department. He is well-known among his colleagues for his culinary talents, which adds to the camaraderie of the firehouse. Furthermore, Tyree's devotion extends beyond Nagshead. He actively contributes to the well-being of other communities. In his personal life, Tyree cherished his time with his daughter Ellie in Elizabeth City. During his time off, he finds solace in activities such as fishing and exploring the beauty of the mountains. Tyree Hughes embodies the values of Nags Head Fire Rescue's team, demonstrating courage, commitment, compassion, and his service to our citizens and visitors. His dedication has earned him the respect of his supervisors and peers alike. With great pride, I present to you Tyree Hughes, who serves as a shining example within our department.
Tyree. Very good. Yes, sir. Please continue.
Distinguished Mayor Kahoon and esteemed Board members, today I have the distinct honor of presenting Deputy Chief Shane Height, a remarkable individual who has demonstrated unwavering dedication and commitment to our community for an impressive 20 years. His service is a pillar of strength within Nags Head Fire Rescue, deserving of our recognition. Deputy Chief Height joined Nags Head Fire Rescue on June 9th, 2003, embarking on a journey of selfish devotion that led him to rise through the ranks and assume the esteemed position of Deputy Chief. Throughout his illustrious career, he has consistently pursued personal growth and professional development, embodying the spirit of continuous improvement. Deputy Chief Height's exceptional firefighting skills, exemplary leadership have earned him the admiration and respect of his peers and supervisors. He is recognized within our town as an individual who consistently goes above and beyond the call of duty, selflessly putting the needs of others before his own. In addition to Deputy Chief Height's invaluable contributions to the Fire Department, he also is a devoted family man. He currently resides in Collington with his beloved partner Stephanie and their son Jackson. He is the proud father of three daughters, Rebecca, Amber, and Abby. Deputy Chief Height cherishes spending quality time with his family and actively engages in various activities, including fishing, boating, camping, and camping, and camping. Today, we honor Deputy Chief Height, who epitomizes the core values of Nags Head Fire Rescue: courage, commitment, and compassion. His unwavering dedication to the safety and well-being of our citizens and visitors is an inspiration to us all. In addition to celebrating Deputy Chief Height's exemplary service, it is my privilege to present him with the highly esteemed Executive Fire Officer designation from the National Fire Academy. Achieving this designation is a testament to his exceptional skills, leadership, and unwavering commitment to the fire service. The EFO designation represents Deputy Chief Height's relentless pursuit of knowledge and mastery of his craft. This rare and distinguished honor places him among the elite group of individuals who have reached the highest level of achievement in their field. It reflects not only on his personal accomplishments, but on also the caliber of our fire and emergency services. Today, we extend our heartfelt congratulations to Deputy Chief Shane Height for his exceptional service of over 20 years and for his receiving this prestigious Executive Fire Officer designation. His remarkable contributions have left an indelible mark on our community, and we are immensely proud to have him as a leader and a role model within our department. Thank you.
If I could, just a quick word. 20 years is a long time, and I'm very appreciative to the town, very appreciative to the department, and mostly to my family for supporting me this whole time. A lot of people in this room have helped to bring me up through the fire service, and I'm appreciative of that. But this town has treated me really well, and I thank you all and those who have contributed to that. So, thank you.
Before you leave, I will ask Board members if they would like to also make a comment. We appreciate you and your 20 years of service very much. Renee?
Shane, I can't begin to thank you enough. You've done a great job. You've given our Fire Department a lot of professionalism, and you are a consummate professional. We appreciate your service to our community and all the citizens of Nagshead.
Thank you.
Shane, congratulations on the 20 years, but more importantly, the EFO certification designation. That's an esteemed honor, honor for you, and congratulations.
Thank you. Roberta, if you will, I'll ask the Board to come around, and if we can get a picture with Deputy Chief Height. Y'all are the face of the town. I mean, we're here on meeting days, but y'all are the folks that people see every day. You're the folks that visitors see every day, and we really appreciate the way all of you represent the town. Thank you. That brings us to public comment, and I will turn this over to Attorney Leidy. This, I remind folks, this would be the time to speak to any issue that is not a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the Board of Commissioners welcomes members of the public to come and provide comment to the Board. This is an opportunity for you to express comments. It is not an opportunity for dialogue, and the Board rarely responds to a public comment. But for anybody who wishes to comment on general matters, this would be the time. As the mayor pointed out, we do have a public hearing later on the agenda, and if you're here to provide information or comment regarding that, you can reserve your comments until that time. But for those who wish to comment now, this would be your opportunity. Please start by going to the podium, start by telling us your name and where you live, and then address your comments to the Board.
Mr. Fuller?
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, manager, staff. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. What I want to speak about is on the agenda, but I asked the mayor, and he said I should speak about it during audience response as opposed to at the time of the item. Anyway, I think it's Item H, and it concerns requests for removal of portion of Nagshead Woods Road submitted by Stan White and Louise Afar. And I just want to come and say, oh, Web Fuller, 452 Villa Doones Road. And as a neighbor, I just want to tell the Board I'm totally in support of the revised request. As submitted, there was a map that was submitted with that request. Maybe you can't see it, but it's this map. And this map illustrates the portion of the road that's supposed to be removed, and that's what I'm requesting that, I'm in favor of that being removed. I think staff's done an excellent job of giving answers to all the questions about why that portion should be considered for removal by the Board, and totally support that. Now comes the hook from me. In so doing, one thing I would like to request further is that the town actually go out and survey the 10-foot easement that goes from this portion all the way to the northern portion of the Ralph Buxton subdivision. And the reason for that is, back at the time of the subdivision, there was a granted 10-foot wide right-of-way easement granted by those property owners. And I'm not sure any of us know exactly where that 10-foot wide easement is, so it would just behoove us since it's got, since you're going to close a port, hopefully you close a portion of the road, that you're just going and survey the rest of it so we know exactly where it is, where it crosses my property and Ralph Buxton's property. So that'd be my only other request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Anybody else wish to comment? All right, if not, we will now conclude the public comment session.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda, and a motion would be in order.
Say move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. That brings us to public hearings, and I will turn it back to Mr. Leidy again.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So at this time, the Board of Commissioners will begin the public hearing to consider text amendments to Section 11.10, a discharge of storm water, pool water, hot tub water, and de-watering effluent. This is Item F1 on your agenda. In this matter, the Board sits as a legislative body, and therefore sworn testimony and so forth are not required. But we will begin by receiving the staff's analysis presented by the Planning and Development Director, Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. Good morning. I apologize, my huddle hub is not cooperating right now, so I'm going to try to do it the old-school way. I can bring this up. Okay. So as noted, I'm here this morning to present a proposed text amendment to Section 11.10, discharge of storm water, pool water, hot tub water, and de-watering effluent. I've discussed this in the past, but we recently had a situation down around the Wellbone area where we had some trouble with de-watering and it flooding the neighborhood in the process of installation of an in-ground pool. And when that happened, we realized that we could strengthen our existing language. When we discussed that scenario with the Septic Health Advisory Committee, they also felt like that was problematic, and we could review our existing language to see if there was opportunities to ensure that that type of concern associated with de-watering would not present itself again. So we did have a chance to go through that. In your packet, I've included the ordinance language as it exists today. I did note that we typically see discharge of effluent and de-watering in post-storms. We'll see people try to discharge the water post a storm event, and that's usually something that's taken care of by the town manager on a case-by-case basis. We also encounter occasionally people that are draining their existing pools, and they're de-watering that pool water either onto their property, but it's crossing property lines, or sometimes even directly onto an adjoining property. In those cases, when we become aware of it, we do issue a notice of violation and require that that activity cease immediately. And then we have the scenario that we're now encountering with in-ground pools with elevated groundwater within the town. So what I will do is to just go through so that we can all review the changes that have been made to Section 11.10. Let's see if I can get this a little bit larger. So here's the existing language. We do have a proposed revision to 11.10.1. It says it shall be prohibited to discharge or direct water onto adjoining properties. Then what we're proposing to remove is, without appropriate easements or agreements from any source under control of the owner of the premise, to include retained storm water, runoff swimming pools, hot tubs, heating and air conditioning systems, or groundwater from de-watering activities. For this, we essentially just wanted to go ahead and say that you're not going to be a private person, is not going to be able to obtain authorization from an adjoining property owner to de-water their pool water effluent, et cetera, onto that property. So there's not going to be a case where you could gain permission, have an agreement, or an easement from an adjoining property owner. One thing that occurred during this most recent scenario was a nearby commercial establishment had an approved storm water management measure. And the property owner did give permission for them to run their de-watering into that approved storm water measure. But of course, you never know how much water is actually going to be put into that system, and it turned out to be quite a lot, and it had even topped the storm water measure. There was rain in the forecast, so it's just, we don't believe the Septic Health Committee and the Planning Board agrees, it's just not a good idea to de-water into an approved storm water management measure that's been required by the town. So we wanted to eliminate the opportunity for that to happen. Section 11.10.2, we say that the discharge of retained storm water from other sources into the town right-of-way is allowable with written permission from the town manager, public works director, or town engineer. We added "or their designee." In many cases, this is coming directly from town manager, public works, or town engineer, but should there be an off situation where we can communicate with one of these three people, but they're just not available to actually put it into writing, someone else could do that on their behalf. And in Section 11.10.4, upon determination that this section is being violated, the storm water administrator or their designee may immediately issue a notice of violation, civil citation, or a warning citation. Upon receipt of the notice, the violator shall immediately cease and desist the activity. And again, we just added "or their designee" here. As the planning director, I would be the storm water administrator under the UDO, but more often than not, what you're going to have is our code enforcement officer who's recognized the activity and wants to go ahead and put a stop work and an NOV on it immediately, of course, with my permission. Those are the changes that we've made within the ordinance itself, and I did want to note that internally, staff has developed a set of procedures for how we're going to handle applications when they come in from this point on, whether it's for the new installation of an in-ground pool, or even not an in-ground pool, and to take into account what occurs when they're draining that pool water as well. So I can go through, I can actually show you that if you'd like to see it, but from the point that it comes in the door, we're requesting more information on the application. We're requesting a de-watering plan or a discharge plan in advance of issuance of a permit. That will need to be provided to us in writing and as part of any condition of approval. And then we're also highlighting that should you need to de-water, you need written permission from town manager, public works director, and town engineer to do that. And if at any point it becomes cumbersome and we can't continue to allow that, we can require it to cease immediately, and should they not, immediate notice of violation to be placed upon them with civil penalties. Also noting that there could be scenarios where groundwater is so elevated that you're going to have to go ahead and utilize a truck to take that water and remove it from the premise, but then with that, you also have to tell us where you're going to be placing that water. So some few changes to Section 11.10. I think the majority of this is going to be effective from our new internal procedures as we handle this. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does the Board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt? Does the Board wish to comment on this matter? Does the Board wish to receive any other information regarding these proposed text amendments before deliberating?
Aye.
If not, at this time, we will conclude the public hearing on this matter, and the Board may begin its deliberations.
All right. Thank you. I'll start down with Mr. Sears and ask if there are any comments.
No comments.
Commissioner. All right. In that case, perhaps a motion would be in order.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Say. Have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Any further discussion?
Question, does the motion include the statement of consistency? I will make that a amendment to my motion. I'll accept that amendment.
Okay. Then we have an amended motion and second to approve as presented and to include the consistency statement. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Thank you. Kelly, we need you back for your update.
Try to minimize this. Go back to the agenda, and I'll open up the planning director report. And I don't have too much to discuss today on this, but as always, I'm happy to go into more detail. At the Plating Boards meeting on June 20th, we primarily focused on two items. The first was a presentation on the draft questions for the townwide community survey. The planning board had a lot of great input on that, and I think Town Manager Garman has been working on incorporating those into the survey. We also talked about the reintegration of multifamily into the UDO. We made some really good progress with that. A lot of it was geared towards eliminating some of the existing inconsistencies that was already in the ordinance, and then now moving forward with the reintegration process. I noted last time I was up here, but at some point, if there was an opportunity for a joint workshop between the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board, that would be beneficial. The Board of Adjustment had no hearings in June, but they do have one coming up on Thursday, July 13th, and that's for a variance to some decking that was constructed without permits at 8723 South Old Oregon Inlet Road. The Septic Health Advisory Committee, they haven't had their quarterly meeting just yet. They're going to be meeting on Friday, July 28th, at 10:00 a.m. But I did want to note that as part of that next quarterly meeting, we're going to be talking about the numbers from this last fiscal year. So the number of pumpouts, the number of inspections and loans, and then we would like to get before the Board at their August or September meeting to provide an update from the committee on where we're at. With regard to the Estrian Shoreline Management Plan, the full grant for the National Fish and Wildlife Fund has been submitted, and that was for an amount of $750,000. A lot of the items that we haven't really had significant updates on. I will say that the Nagshead Dog Park, we do have the surfacing done for the entry area at the dog park, and we're currently constructing a shade structure out there. And so the park is technically closed until today, actually. So hopefully that's all wrapping up, and people can get back in there and enjoy that. You did notice maybe one additional document on the back of your report, which was the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. This is just something that we bring to you every year, just updating the areas of the plan where there's been some progress throughout the year. We do this as part of our submittal for the CRS program, the Community Rating System. So that's in there for your review. This will go towards helping us when we have our audits. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Sanders, any questions? Commissioner Kahoon?
No. Thank you, Kelly, for all the good work that's going on. The Doughty Park events are really wonderful, and your staff's doing a really good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you so much.
That brings us to Item H. Old business and items tabled from previous meetings, and this is the discussion to request to vacate a portion of Old Nagshead Woods Road. Andy?
So obviously, the town has received a request from Stan White and Louise Afar to vacate the portion of Old Nagshead Woods Road easement on their properties. Originally, the request included the entire length of the easement on both properties. There's been some discussion amongst the neighbors and with the town about this, and so the request has now been revised to include just the portion south of Mr. White's driveway, which is shown on the screen here. So what's on the screen is the Ralph Buxton subdivision plat, which included four lots, lots one through four. Mr. White and Louise Afar own lots three and four. What you don't see on this map is that Mr. White has a driveway which comes in right around where this bend is in the road, and so the portion up to Mr. White's driveway is improved and everything north of there. One of the conversations between the neighbors and the town is that everybody that lives north of Mr. White, Mr. Fuller, Mr. Buxton, they utilize Nagshead Woods Road, that easement, and the improved portion of it to get to their properties. And so if the entire length of it was vacated on both of those properties, it would essentially cut off Mr. Buxton and Mr. Fuller. So Mr. White then came back and revised his So Mr. White then came back and revised his request just to include everything south of his driveway. So, you know, we obviously were asked by the board to make a recommendation or analyze this. We've talked to several people, you know, I've talked to Mr. White, Mr. Fuller, I did talk to former mayor Bob Mueller about this, just to get some of the history. You know, this 10-foot wide access easement was granted to the town as part of the subdivision in 1986, I believe. At the time, according to former mayor Bob Mueller, this was a cartway. Town attorney at the time, Tom White, said that this was a cartway. It was not a recognized right-of-way. And at some point in time, you know, there could be a dispute if the town didn't get an easement granted to it. And so as part of the subdivision plat, the town got the easement granted to it. And the purpose for this primarily was to provide a potential access to these lots. So as you can see, you know, Stan White, Mr. White, the former owner of Mr. Fuller's property, and then Ralph Buxton, all improved their lots with single-family dwellings and connected driveways to the easement. The lot number four was not developed until just recently. That owner, Louise Afar, has constructed a driveway which extends all the way out to Billadune's Drive. So she does not use the easement for access. So essentially, that's what's changed since the access was given to the town, is that all lots have been developed and only three of the lots are utilizing the access and only, Mr. White is only using a portion of that access. So the primary purpose for which the access was granted was for access to the lots. When considering the request, you know, we look at what this could potentially be used for. One thing that distinguishes this from other requests we received is that it's only a 10-foot wide easement. You know, most of the rights-of-way we have are 50 or 60 feet wide. And so there's not much this could be used for, except for maybe a pedestrian path or a driveway. We know it no longer is needed for a driveway. Pedestrian path, that's not the intent for which this was originally granted. And so we don't object to this request. With that said, as Mr. Fuller stated earlier, he's in support of this. And I've spoken with Mr. Buxton, he does not object to this. In your packet, you received a copy of the statute for vacating rights-of-way. Basically, you have to follow a process to do that. There's a resolution in your packet that you would adopt. You would also need to go ahead and schedule a public hearing for the August meeting. So there are two separate actions we need. The adoption of the resolution and then scheduling of a public hearing. We would then advertise this in the newspaper, I believe, for four weeks prior to the public hearing. And then you could adopt this at your August meeting and hold the public hearing as well at that same time. Again, we do not object to this. We feel like it's a reasonable request. And as Mr. Fuller stated, there's been some good dialogue with the neighbors. So we feel like we've gotten the input that we need.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Board, any comments? Commissioner Sears?
No comments.
Commissioner Brinkley? Commissioner Sanders?
No comments.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. You have the resolution that's required in the packet. And I think that we could probably do a single motion to approve, to adopt the resolution and to schedule the public hearing for our next meeting.
I should make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Thank you. Thank y'all.
It's 30 years, man. Appreciate it.
That brings us to new business and committee reports. And I'll start at my right with Commissioner Sanders.
Pardon? No, nothing to further this update.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Brinkley?
Nothing to present, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Coon? Commissioner Sears?
Nothing.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to consideration of an appointment to the board of adjustment. And I believe in the packet, we did advertise subsequently, I believe we got no additional names.
Here, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Commissioner Coon?
Here, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Angelina Lowe to the board of adjustments.
All right. Thank you.
As an alternate member.
All right. I have that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Thank you. Brings us to item I three, consideration of amendments to the traffic control map. Chief Hale.
Morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here before you this morning to request two considerations to amend the traffic control map, one on Soundside Road, West Soundside Road, to restrict commercial motor vehicles and buses. And then the other one would be on Bonnet Street, East Bonnet Street, for a no parking zone. For Soundside Road, we've seen an increase in traffic over the past few years, specifically traffic going to and from Jockeys Ridge, State Park, the sound access at the end of the road on the curve. Recently, it was brought to our attention. We had tour buses have been trying to gain access to this access on Soundside Road. With the amount of regular vehicle traffic and foot traffic, I was making the recommendation to amend the traffic control map to restrict these types of vehicles in this neighborhood. Under Article One, Section 36-1 of the town's ordinances, Soundside is considered an environmental street and a sub-collector street. Both of these collectively restrict through traffic, and then they are not meant for high volumes. And as those streets project supposedly low traffic volumes and low traffic counts. Obviously, with the access there, visitors want to go see this site, and we welcome them there. But the additional load of commercial motor vehicles or tour buses, I think, puts a, another type of strain on this neighborhood right here, with the number of foot traffic specifically and other vehicles going to and from their residences. I do not want to restrict it just to through traffic, because if someone is trying to go to the access and doesn't go all the way through, they would have an objection to that they're not violating it. So the ordinance would just have where they're prohibited. It would not be as a through-traffic vehicle. There's no place for them to turn around down there, and the access itself can't accommodate those types of vehicles. Anyone wanting to use this, we welcome them to, but they would need to go to Careless Drive and access the park through the park's main entryway. This restriction would not apply to any state or county. Maintain school buses, activity buses, or commercial motor vehicles from somebody ordering a product that would be delivered to a specific address. Somebody got new furniture or anything else that vehicles would fall under that restriction, they would be exempt, being if they were delivering a product to that area. This would be regulated under Section 42-41, which is either civil or criminal penalty for this neighborhood right here, just on the portion of West Soundside Road. Our other amendment that I'm recommending is parking on East Bonnet Street. The town's dowdy park receives numerous visitors each day, and with the amount of events that go on, visitors and users of the park do use the overflow parking at Nagshead Elementary School. They also park on the north side of Bonnet Street. Within that north section right there, on 2921 South Croton Highway, which is the property of the French Door, they use a portion of their property on East Bonnet Street for some parking. And when the town has events or other activities are going on at Dowdy Park and the numerous people there, the amount of traffic that starts parking on North Bonnet Street blocks those accesses for the property owner to gain access to their property. So I would recommend just basically from the apex of the roof of the building west towards the bypass to put up no parking right there, which would allow the property owner access there and customers using, going to visit their store. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I have a question, just as an observation. That also seems sensible, given the proximity of the intersection, just to not permit parking on that side of the street.
Yes, sir.
Just for vision clearance and any number of other reasons. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Sears?
Chief, why would you stop at the end of the clearing? Why wouldn't you run it all the way down to the intersection?
You talking about towards the bypass?
No, the other direction, towards Wrightsville.
Just right there for their property? They're gaining access there, I guess, with no direct walking path to their property? I mean...
Their property extends almost three-quarters of the way down that block. And this well zone's the remaining part. And there's a drainage swell that could prevent parking, but why not just make that whole block no parking?
I mean, I wouldn't object to it because we have people that run into the ditch from parking there. I wouldn't object to it. If you stop it there, and I will say this, being that if we do it to their property, are you saying carrying it all the way to Wrightsville or where their property ends?
Carry it to right to the corner of Wrightsville, and that prevents anybody parking on the north side of Bonnet Street in that block.
I personally don't disagree with it.
Okay.
I visited the market last Thursday, and I noticed there was parking all the way down, including where you recommended the no parking zone. How many issues do you have, though, on parking on the north side of Bonnet?
As far as specific issues, other than traffic not being able to go at the same time, north, I mean, east and west traffic, we write tickets when we, in Nagshead, we have nothing that restricts people from parking somewhat on the street. Like other towns, no tires can touch the street. We don't have that. So if traffic can get by and it's not a no parking zone, we monitor it. But when they get by and two vehicles can't pass at the same time, we use obstruction of passage of vehicles where two vehicles can't get by. So that's what we run into there. And then when vehicles do run into the ditch there, a wrecker has to come, they have to tow it out. So then we have to deal with traffic issues while people are being pulled out.
How many vehicles have you actually had to pull out of the ditch there? Because I know there's already a big parking problem, and that might increase the parking problem. If we limit the parking on that side of the street, it will definitely increase the problem.
We had one that was in a ditch last week. The town does not pull those out. It's up to the reporting that calls us about it to get those pulled out. We would assist in directing the traffic if it was blocking up, if the tow truck couldn't handle it itself. I can't say that somebody does it every week, but there has been a few occasions where people do back into the ditch or pull into the ditch there. I don't know.
But so far this year, you noticed one?
I think there's been two this year.
Two this year?
No, my concern is, much like Commissioner Sanders said, there's already a parking issue. I mean, it's busy there.
Yes, sir.
During markets and during events. But if you make that entire block no parking, are you going to push more people to park on the right-of-ways on Wrightsville?
I would think it would push people to Wrightsville. We made Wrightsville from Bonnet Street south, no parking, I think, five or six years ago, four or five years ago. And then we have a driveway that's on the north side right there that we try to monitor to keep people from parking and blocking that, because that homeowner has called us on them a few times. But it would push people to other places. Because you've got Bonnet Street that's full from people going to the beach, and frankly, people are not going to park and walk. They look for the closest place possible.
Dowdy's parking lot is full, and the school parking lot is full, and there are, it's just a drainage swell. There are no homes really. I mean, you're not encroaching on anybody's home when you park on that side of the road, correct?
No, sir. I mean, if there was a solution to where that could be filled in or something, and a pipe put in place, and people could park, I mean, that would be an option. But if you did make it no parking, they're going to park somewhere else. Of course, we monitor the events there regularly to make sure, because people do like to pull up and park real close to a stop sign, and then you can't see the stop sign.
I guess where I'm coming from is, I appreciate Commissioner Sears bringing this up, and it is, I mean, it's just fact, it is. But before, I would want, my personal opinion before, I would want to make the entire block no parking. I would like to see how much of a problem it really is. Meaning, are we writing tickets? People going to the, I mean, one, I want to protect the infrastructure there, obviously, but I just don't, I think we're going to push one problem off on another problem. And then are we going to make all Wrightsville no parking from Bonnet Street north, like we did south? It just, at some point, there's got to be a happy medium, I think.
Just to remind everybody, we did have, when we closed that shoulder of Wrightsville south of Bonnet Street, that shoulder is extremely narrow, and you can't really park on that shoulder without, my recollection of that discussion was that we were hindering the flow of traffic on Wrightsville, because people were parking essentially partly on the, partly on the street. So Andy wanted to add something. I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to mention that the, this came up, we had a meeting with Julian Kelly, the owner of the French Door. She had requested it. It was primarily over the parking issue adjacent to her business. And so she was looking for some relief, primarily due to the market. So she had asked for this specific request. And so we limited it to this area, knowing that the area to the east of that is used for the market. Julian Kelly also owned, well, I think the plan is for her to own the building and the strip that runs along Bonnet to the east. The property is sort of an L shape. And in the future, we'd like to explore ideas for additional parking there, possibly not in the right-of-way, but maybe by acquiring some property, something that we would need to talk to the board about and to the owner. And that would also involve piping that ditch and providing a better situation than what's there now. But, you know, we sort of limited it to this specific request and didn't extend it from a staff perspective, just because we know there's a balance there between parking and issues. The section on the south side of Bonnet is obviously no parking because of the sidewalk. And so because you have no parking on one side already, that assists with being able to have clearance for vehicles to pass in both directions.
Thank you. Commissioner Coon, you're the only one we haven't heard from on this.
I'm good with it as presented.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You know, I'm good with it as presented. I'm hesitant to amend this. We've had, over my term here, a number of closures of shoulders for parking come up. And it's often a discussion like this one that is sort of in the absence of a policy as to why we do and do not close shoulders to parking. You know, we get emails about, well, why do you allow parking on the shoulder in this place and not this place? And, you know, I'd really like to see us have something that gave us guidance. I mean, I trust that, I trust fire and police when you tell us, you know, it's a safety issue. But I'd really like to see us have some kind of guidance as to why, why and where we would close shoulders and not, so that it's a little less, a little more objective and a little less subjective, if we can get that. And so, I mean, that, that sort of leaves me in favor of the way it's presented today, rather than changing the, changing the terms on the fly. Although I appreciate those concerns about people going in the ditch, and I hope that there is a way that we can remedy that and actually improve the parking in that area.
Most of it's complaint-driven. Most of the areas that we've addressed have been complaint-driven.
Yeah.
And issues of people parking even on the street.
Right.
Some people seem to think the street is a parking space.
Yes.
Mayor, we spoke about this the other day. So obviously, we've had several requests come up in the last couple of years for not only traffic map amendments, but traffic control devices. We've had requests for speed humps and digital signs and reductions of speed limits in neighborhoods. And so we've talked internally about this, and we recognize we do need to have some sort of policy or procedure, specifically traffic calming. You know, sometimes those things are expensive, and, you know, we need to make sure that it's vetted through the neighborhood, that the neighborhood's in favor of it. A lot of... A lot of communities have a policy and a process that guides this, and in some cases, a certain percentage of the neighbors have to sign a petition, and, and also in some cases, the neighborhood has to pay some of the engineering costs to analyze the request for traffic calming measures specifically. So, you know, we do feel like we, we need to have some sort of policy that not only covers traffic calming, but also requests to traffic control map, and so it's something that we'd like to, to work on.
Thank you. Having had, already had a lot of discussion, I think a motion would be in order, and we can discuss further if we want.
Make a motion that we adopt the recommendations to the town's traffic control map as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to prove as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
While we're on the traffic control map, I thought we might have this on our agenda, electric bikes on the bike path?
Yes.
Which is a problem?
Yes.
Would this be appropriate, or would you rather wait until Commissioner's business?
Please, no, 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 ma'am, you may proceed now.
I believe we have a prohibition on our bike path of electric vehicles, other than wheelchairs and so forth?
I'm gonna ask Chief Hale to come up and address this, what we, what we permit in terms of electric vehicles on our multi-use paths.
It was last year, I believe, we amended it to allow them and gave us the authority that we could regulate if they were operating in a careless or reckless manner, then we would have the authority to pull them, cite them, remove them from the path, and I believe that was done last year or the year before.
And I would be in favor of removing that and going back to the way it was, no electric vehicles on the multi-use path unless it's a bike, wheelchair, or other ADA approved device, because the electric vehicles are out of control. And they're bigger, they're much faster, they're a hazard to people with families, people are almost getting run over, they're using, in some cases, they're racing on them, side by side, and that leaves room for nobody else. And electric bikes should be on the road as they should be approved for, and they do not need to be on our multi-use path.
Chief Hale, can you speak to your observations, your, your staff's observations?
We have seen some, and we have pulled some off the, the path and have talks with them. Honestly, I wish the, the state would regulate these things a little bit more. When you, from, in my opinion, when you look at it, it's, it's, I mean, it's basically a moped, these things can run upwards of thirty-some miles per hour. When we first started looking at this and the amount of them that was here, I was seeing families that were using them, and then teenagers using them, and there were some that are out of control, and we've dealt with those. The path is there. I was hoping we'd be able to, to use the ordinance that we had and enforce it like that, but there is being an influx. I know that there's numerous rental companies here that rent these things now. I've made contact with a lot of them, along with the low-speed vehicles, and gave them the flyer that I presented to y'all back in April, I believe. I do know that several of these companies have emailed me back thanking me for those, and are posting them up on the steering wheels of the low-speed vehicles, and telling the people with the electric bikes, you know, you have to operate in a, in a reasonable manner. I saw some last night while we were working that were just riding, they pedaled for a little while, and then they would use the electric portion of it that were, that were fine. And then on the way home, I saw one that was going a little fast, he had his lights and everything on, but it led to me to have a conversation with him of making sure that he is alert and driving at a speed that is, is very cautious, especially at nighttime. I think it, for us to get a handle on it, if we go back the other way, I think it's gonna be challenging, but, I mean, we're up for the task, I believe, and a lot of it being the, the ages that can ride these things, when parents just, just buy them and put the kids out there on them, and they want to go wide open, there's very limited stuff that we can do to juveniles, being that North Carolina has raised the age a couple of years ago, so that restricts us a little bit on those as well.
I guess I probably should ask the, you know, the board's consensus, do we want to direct staff to, to look into modifying this ordinance?
I mean, and, and I've had conversations with the chief. One, I've seen several that are operating in careless, of course, that can't be everywhere at some times, so.
They can hear one at one time.
But I have seen, there's a few that I see, it's fun, there's an older gentleman that rides his on the multi-use path, he's reflecting his clothing, he's, he rides very respectfully.
He's running to and from work, I believe, as well.
But others are just, and they look like they're young adults.
Mr. Sanders, any thoughts?
Um, yeah, it's, 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 it's tough, either way you look at it, I mean, the ordinance, I know what we did last year, I mean, it appears to be working some, but not totally working, and I think a lot of the problem is, there's just more and more of them every year. And I hate to restrict anything that, that goes with physical activity or recreation, but I mean, I guess, I guess it bears a link there.
I mean, there's a, seems to me like there's a, also some differentiation, I can't remember, I'm not sure how wide the multi-use path is on the beach road.
Eight.
It's eight.
Eight feet.
And it's not in great condition. And I wonder, you know, it's also parallel to a thirty-five mile per hour road with a decent shoulder, and I kind of wonder if we could have a different rule for the beach road than we had for our others, where the multi-use path is more generous in terms of its width, and is parallel to a road that we don't want the bike on the shoulder, like 158.
I would be amenable that, the bike path on the beach road, or the multi-use path, excuse me, has a whole lot more pedestrians and families, especially this time of year, than the one on 158. I mean, I have no problem with differentiating.
Right.
But I think there does need to be more clear rule for the multi-use path on the beach, on Highway 12.
Right.
The path on 158, and David's here, and you can weigh in on this, I believe the path on 158 is ten feet wide, which is a more modern standard for multi-use paths and with multiple user types. There's certainly a lot fewer driveways on the bypass multi-use path, and vertical curvatures and things that present problems for users, and, and just the volume of traffic is much less, so there's a distinction there.
Okay. Seems like a possibility. Commissioner Sears?
I'm good with that.
So can we ask staff, can we ask staff to look into, I guess, the positives and negatives, and what, what kind of ordinance it would be, and what kind of enforcement issues it presents for y'all, and perhaps also conversation with the rental companies as well about differentiating the, the multi-use paths on 158 from the multi-use path on NC 12? Because I do understand the difficulty on, on 12. I don't ride it on my reg, I don't ride the multi-use path on my regular bicycle, I prefer to ride the shoulder. I'll get on the multi-use path, and I'll go two hundred yards and have to pull over onto the shoulder because of pedestrians, or a dog, or a car, or some reason, and by the time I do that two or three times on a trip between here and, and my office, I'm like, well, darn it, I'll just ride the shoulder. I mean, I just, you, you know, sort of, sort of give up on it because the inconsistency of weaving back and forth is more dangerous than just being consistent and staying in one place. So I do, I mean, it is, it is a little bit of a problem out.
Yes, sir, we can, we can look at it and, and report back to you, and, you know, I'd like to keep everything the same, so it's not confusing with the different multi-use paths, but if, if that's what we need to do, then we can certainly take a look at it, and even on the bypass, they do have the option of riding up there, I don't know why anybody would want to ride on the shoulder of the bypass, but being that we have general statute that there are a vehicle in North Carolina, and they're not a motor vehicle, but bicycles do, you know, they're supposed to ride to as far to the right of the road as they can, and, you know, share the road, so we can't really keep them off of it, but I, I see people riding it all the time and, and wonder why they're not on the multi-use path, and why would you even want to ride on the shoulder of, you know, with all the traffic down here?
Well, you know, part of it is, I mean, there's, there is always, you know, people are gonna be resistant to the educational component, but there is, I mean, we have Wrightsville Memorial for a long stretch as way anybody is on either the beach road or the bypass when you have the Wrightsville Memorial.
They're on vacation, and they're gonna enjoy themselves while they're here, so...
I don't know.
We can't fix all the things.
No, we can't fix all the things, unfortunately.
Mayor, could we have this back for our August agenda?
Yes, please, if you would.
With that, changes that we asked for?
Yes, thank you, if you will, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that brings us to item I four, consideration of disaster debris removal. David?
Good morning, Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Annually, the town has pre-positioned agreements for debris removal and debris monitoring agreements in case of a storm event. Last year, if you recall, we went through a request for proposal for debris removal services, DRC Emergency Services was selected as the offer, offer for these services, primarily due to their expediency in responding to an event and the utilization of local contractors. That term of that agreement was for one year, with the option to renew for up to three years, and so the staff's recommendation is to go ahead and renew that agreement for debris removal services with DRC Emergency Services. Secondly, for debris monitoring services, we had an agreement in place with Tetra Tech, and that recently expired. We had put out a request for proposal, we, unfortunately, we only received one bid for that, and so we're in the process of going through a rebid period, and we will likely go ahead and bring that back for your consideration at the August meeting. And it should be noted that we did go through additional outreach to try to garner some greater interest with other firms for those services, and we are hopeful that we'll have more than one than what we originally had on the first go-around. So for this action, we are requesting the, the board to authorize the town manager to go ahead and renew the agreement with DRC Emergency Services for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, for debris removal services, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Or any questions for David?
Can I ask one question, I'm sorry?
Of course.
Sorry, I don't mean to surprise you with this, but is the request to do it for one more year?
It's to do it for one more year under the current terms and conditions of that original agreement.
Would there be any ability to extend it for more than a year?
No, based upon the original request for proposal, it is for individual years rather than a grouping of years, and that gives us the flexibility where if we're dissatisfied with their services, that we have the option of going in a different direction.
Well, the, the reason, and several board members made a comment to me about this, but just looking at the timing of when this is occurring, is there a way to break this, like in this, do this in the spring, so that whenever they're considering these agreements, it would be in the spring, and not necessarily once we get into the, the season?
We, we, we can, we would have to go ahead and outline that in the request for proposal, so we would have to basically initiate the process again to lay out what the time period is for renewal of these agreements. Right now, the way that it was listed was starting July one and expiring on June 30th, and so we would have to go ahead and start this process all over again in order to revise that.
Well, if, could we just go ahead and approve this and then work on something else that would, that would do that later on?
We could.
Okay.
Follow-up on that question then. So this current agreement would run through June 30?
Correct.
Which would mean that if we wanted to switch to the spring, we would need to, we would essentially need to advertise in the spring for an agreement that would begin July one and would run through the following spring? Is that, is that the way we would make the switch? In other words, we would have a contract that ran for, instead of twelve months, next year, we would adopt a contract or approve a contract that ran essentially nine months, eight or nine months, and then that contract would be spring to spring, and we'd go back to twelve-month contracts?
Essentially, yes.
Or you could do it as advertising in the spring to become effective July 1st, but you would adopt it.
Okay.
It still could be twelve months, starting fiscal year, but you would act on it instead of acting on it after, after the fiscal year.
You would just get that right in the spring, right, okay.
Yeah, you'd get your prices and adopt it.
Okay.
Know what you were doing.
So you'd know what you're doing as part of the budget process, too.
Okay.
Okay, we, we can modify that for next spring.
Okay, thank you. In that case, we would need to have a motion to approve the proposed disaster debris removal agreement. Have a motion, is our second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. That brings us to items from the town attorney, Mr. Lide, I know that we have a closed session.
That's correct, we do, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to add one more item to that closed session, which would be to also discuss the 205 Baltic litigation with the town attorney. But that's all I have for my items.
Thank you. That brings us then to items from the town manager and the public services facility update. You want David back for that?
Yes, please.
All right, up here on the screen is an overview of the public services complex, and I've got different colors noted here on the screen, I've got a legend here at the bottom. What's noted in gray is stone that has been placed throughout various areas of the site. This greenish color right here represents some grading that has taken place primarily for the proposed building pads for several of the new buildings throughout the complex. The orange lines represent some foundation work that either has taken place or is in progress for the buildings, or some of the retaining walls that go along with the bulk drop-off area, and what's noted in purple is a color to designate that the concrete slab has been poured. And so I'll just take you through the various improvements on the site, starting on the right-hand side of the site, you know, we've got some grading for the customer parking area, we've got the stone that has been placed at both entrances on the very north and south side of the site, and stone placed over here where our existing bulk yard operation is on the east side of Lark Avenue. Now, I've got some photos to share, and this is the area where the administration building is currently located, and this takes you through the construction, we have the initial grading that took place there for the site, and as you can see, when we progress over time, we have the building pad that has been prepped here, the foundation work that started along with the rebar placement for that foundation, pouring of the concrete for the foundation, some of the underslab work that has... work that has taken place. And then finally, the concrete slab, which was poured last Friday for the administration building. So we've, we've had a lot of work taking place on that site. We've also have, as I had mentioned, this is the foundation that has been poured for the retaining wall, which is part of that bulk drop-off area. As we progress westward, there's been some work that has been conducted over here for the fleet facilities and sanitation building. I've got some photos to share. This right here is located in the southwest corner of that site. And this is the stone placement which will serve as the future parking area on the very south side of that building. And here you can see, this is taken from a viewpoint where the former facilities maintenance building was located. That was demoed on the very front end of construction. And you can see this very expansive building pad that has been installed on that site. Going back to the west, we have work that has begun on our building pad, on our equipment building pad. You can see some of the fill that has been placed here. And here is some of the initial excavation work along with some of that final building pad placement. And then lastly, for the water distribution building, which is located just on the south side of the water plant property, you can see some of the work that has taken place for that foundation. And some of the material that has recently been delivered to the site, which will, we'll start seeing some of these vertical components being incorporated into the administration building and then the water distribution building here within the next several weeks. What does this look like from an aerial view? This is a recently taken aerial photo of the public works site. And this is taken from the west side of the site, over there in the proximity of the fresh pond. You can see over here to the left, the water distribution building. Down front here, this is where the equipment building is. Over here, just the other side of the water tower, this is where the fleet facilities and sanitation building is to be located. You can see this is our existing main public works building, which is currently in operation. And over here across the street is where the administration building is located. So at this time, I've completed about eleven percent of the overall project scope with this work. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
How are we doing on the schedule?
On, on the schedule, we just had a project meeting last week. And generally, the contractor said that we are in line with the schedule that they had laid out for us.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners?
That was my question. Thank you.
Okay.
No questions, but thank you for the update. That's exciting times.
Yes, sir.
It is.
Great. Thank you, David.
All right, thank you.
Nice drone shots.
Yeah.
Thank you to Roberta for those.
Oh, okay. Good. Thanks, Roberta.
That brings us to the community survey update. Andy, you doing this?
Yes, sir. So something we've been working on for the last couple of months, we initiated this process a couple of months ago with hiring the National Research Center Polco to help us provide a survey to the public. And they're also going to use their platform to administer the survey and compile the results. They provided us with a menu of questions to choose from. We also looked at a previous survey, survey we did about fifteen years ago to, to mine some questions from that. We put together a draft of the survey. We presented that to the planning board, had a good discussion, narrowed it down a little bit further. And what you have in your packet is more of a final draft of the survey, taking into consideration not only all of the staff input, but also the planning board. I know I've talked to each of you about the survey. I've gotten some feedback on some of the questions. I think there's a couple more minor revisions to make to this, but we're getting closer. And so I, I plan to go and make those final revisions this coming week. And then we would like to start the process to get this out to the public. And there are several steps we're going to take. The consultant will mail a postcard out to the sample recipients. And that will notify them that this is coming. And then following that, we'd like to put out a newsletter to the community explaining what we're doing and sort of giving them a heads up that there'll be an opportunity to participate in this in the next couple of months. And the survey will, will go out probably towards the latter part of July. And then we would expect about six weeks for people to, to provide their results or their input. And our goal is to have this back, the results back to you presented in the fall. And we would like to use the results as part of a strategic planning exercise with the board sometime in the fall. So unless you have any specific comments beyond what you've provided me, we'd welcome any feedback at this time.
Board? Just excited, excited to see it happen. Something we've been talking about for a while. And I know staff's been talking about it, working on it for a while, and how much it would, it would potentially benefit us. So carry on. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next item is a cell towers update. Is that you or David or?
I think it's Deputy Town Manager Amy Miller.
Okay. All right. Amy?
Good morning, everybody. Just a quick kind of update as to what's been going on with some cell tower requests we have. We're really trying to consolidate, streamline, centralize this process. We have had four requests between the South Naggshead Tower and the Monopole. We've had three requests of the South Naggshead Tower to either upgrade or add equipment, and one request of the Monopole. This is in addition to our project that we're working on, which is the smart meters. We also need antennas for that. So the way we had done it before is we would let these providers use whoever they, you know, wanted to do a structural analysis, submit it to the planning board so they can get the building permit, et cetera. That worked when we had one at a time. But now that we have four different requests at the same time and two of the requests are right on top of each other, we kind of felt like we needed to step back. And Nancy had done some outreach to see some best practices at other communities. And what we found was this company, T E P. And what we are starting with is just a structural, the structural integrity with the towers right now, just to get a baseline. And what we would propose going forward is that all these requests be sent to T E P, just because we need to show everything at, at once on one plan, rather than four different plans from four different places in order to get the building permit. So we're, we're trying to send everything to one place. That way, when these requests come in at the same time, or sometimes people contact myself, Carolyn, Nancy, we're all on the same page with, with what's happening. And so I'm, you know, you all can read the memo, but unless you had any other questions, that's kind of the, the base of, of what we're doing. There's really no board action needed. We just wanted to let you know what's been happening, how much revenue these generate, what requests are coming down. And if you had any comments or, or questions or objections, that's what we would sort of propose to do going forward.
All right. Thank you, Board.
Only one comment. There's a huge amount of discrepancy on the Monopole between the revenue from Verizon and the revenue from T-Mobile. I think that's a huge discrepancy.
They've been on there longer and they have more equipment. They've had multiple revisions. So I think it's just because all, all of the, I will say, all of the contracts are equal as far as what the escalation rate is. It's three percent a year. So all of the contracts we have do have an escalation at three percent. And just T-Mobile's not been on there nearly as long and they have less equipment and less, they've only done it one time where Verizon's had multiple additions.
I have a kind of unrelated, somewhat related question. Is there, is there a, an Osprey nest hindering the installation of a repeater unit that we need for our smart meters? There is. So we'll have to wait until that nest is not occupied. Okay. I had heard that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Discussion of a joint board of commissioners, planning board workshop. Andy?
This can be brief. The planning board has been working on several items, as the board is aware. One of the larger discussions the planning board is having is about adding multifamily as a use back into the ordinance. And there's a lot of moving parts to this. It's, it's a pretty big task. And it's something that could go sideways pretty quickly. And the planning board would really like to have some feedback directly with the board before they get too far along with this, just to make sure they're, they're moving in the right direction. And so there, there's a few other topics that we could possibly incorporate into this joint workshop, but I think the multifamily item would be the biggest one. And we've talked a little bit about some options mid-month or in August. Talking with several of you, I feel like the consensus was to try to do it as a workshop after the regular August meeting, rather than trying to convene in the summertime for a mid-month meeting. And so really, that's what we have for you, an opportunity for the planning board and the board to get together and talk about topics of mutual interest. And it's really up to the board on how you'd like to proceed with the meeting.
Yes, of course.
I'd love to participate, but I don't, the schedules change just for me, but I have a scheduled trip. I'll be out of the country at the August meeting.
Okay.
I've been scheduled for many, many hours.
Understood. Thank you. Any other thoughts about doing this with the August meeting?
Works, worked for me.
Okay. If you don't mind, Kevin, we'll, I think we'll proceed with this at the, at the August meeting. So again, provide the timely input and any conversations that you need to have about sharing your thoughts. Do that ahead of time.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to our board of commissioners' agenda. I started with committee reports down at my right, so I'll start at my left. Commissioner Sears?
I just want to thank the staff for all the hard work they did over the last three days and last night for an uneventful fourth.
Thank you. Commissioner Cahoon?
I would agree with those comments from Commissioner Sears. And one thing, I'm sorry I didn't bring it up earlier, on the Soundside Road changes, I would ask that police department contact the visitors bureau because they have a list of all the bus companies that come here and have them communicate that change to those bus companies.
Good idea. Yes. Thank you.
Similar to what Commissioner Sears had said, you know, the fireworks, we have a vendor that does that, but it's much more than just hiring a vendor to do the fireworks. It's a lot of town employees.
Yes.
That work very hard to make that event such a success. So to public services, to the fire department, to the police department, and everybody else that helped, thank you very much for sacrificing your holiday for the benefit of others.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Sanders?
Yeah, I agree. I'd like to thank the staff for the July fourth. And I'd also like to thank them for the renovations at the skate park at the YMCA. There's been a lot of people out there and got a lot of buzz going and a lot of excitement. So it's good to see you. Really is.
Very good. Thank you. I don't have anything for the mayor's agenda. And so that brings us to our closed, first before we go to closed sessions, is will there be any other business to come for the board? Hearing none. And that brings us to our closed sessions. And Mr. Leidy, if you will do that so that you can add the language for the two oh five Baltic discussion, please?
Yes, sir. The board needs a motion to enter closed session as allowed by North County General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A three in order to confer with the town attorney regarding matters within the attorney-client privilege and preserve that privilege, including the Cherry Inc. litigation and the two oh five Baltic Street litigation.
Thank you. Will Commissioner make a motion to that effect?
Send moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Thank you. The board will be in closed session. All right. The board has returned to open session. Mr. Leidy, will you please report?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the, the board did consult with the town attorney regarding matters within the attorney-client privilege. Some action was taken, but nothing needs to be reported at this time.
Thank you. Will you address the question of additional business before we went into closed session? So a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Send moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you.